Good evening, welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for November 18th, 2019. Can we please have a motion to go into executive session for the matters pertaining to the employment history of particular individuals and contractual negotiations?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to go back into public session?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good evening, welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for November 18th, 2019. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Liliana and Aiden and remain standing for a moment of silence for our armed forces and those in our community who have lost loved ones, especially the father of Samantha Healy and the grandparent of Joseph Avdeck.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Berry, thank you for inviting us to your school tonight. Dr. Hatter, would you like to take over?
Good evening, everyone. It is so wonderful to see you here. Students, it is so great to see you. I think I saw some of you today. Was I in your class today? Yes, I recognize some of you today. It is so wonderful to have you here. It's wonderful to have your children here. It is wonderful to acknowledge the faculty of Mohansec who are in attendance. Thank you so much for coming out tonight, being with us at our Board of Education meeting, and certainly supporting your children. I'm seeing teachers from across the different grade levels here, so it's wonderful to see so many Mohansec faculty here this evening. I'm really looking forward, boys and girls, to your presentation tonight. I know you've been doing some great eSteam learning in your classrooms, and you've been learning about the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals, and I am so excited to hear about your presentation, Choose to Care. At this point, I am going to turn the program over to Mohansec School Principal, Mrs. Berry, to introduce our students.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Hatter, Mrs. O'Shea, Mr. Cole, Mrs. Carbone, Mr. Mignati, board trustees, parents, students, staff, and friends. Welcome to Mohansec Elementary School. We are honored to have you here this evening and honored to host this Board of Education meeting. We are also very excited to share Mohansec's good news with you. Thank you, parents and faculty, for being here, which clearly demonstrates your dedication to and support of our school and all the amazing teaching and learning that takes place each day. A special thank you to Mrs. Fromer, Mrs. Roper, Mrs. Froats, Mrs. Boards, Mrs. Yates, and Mrs. Sanfredino for their time, effort, and energy to bring you our good news. And a very special thank you to our 10 Grade 3 students, my seniors, who are representing their classmates this evening. We hope you enjoy our good news. Thank you. Mrs. Roper, please.
Good evening. I'm delighted to be here tonight with some of Mohansec's 3rd graders and their teachers as they share what they learned about changing climate and unpredictable weather events, specifically hurricanes. Hurricanes often have devastating, long-lasting impact on people and their communities. 3rd graders embarked upon a multi-layered eSteam project to get involved in this important global issue in a meaningful way. Groups were formed to work cooperatively in each class. Each group worked systematically to gather research, read climate change and hurricane-related books and articles, and choose ways to help with ideas about tackling climate change. They chose their climate change tip from the United Nations Sustainable Goals Student Resources section of the United Nations website. In order to complete a vital piece of this project, students worked with a technology called Littlebits. Littlebits is a hands-on learning system of electronic building blocks that allows students of all ages to create with technology. Students also had a beginner's exposure to the Green Screen by Do Ink app when creating their public service announcements. The students were very interested and eager to help people that have been impacted by the destruction hurricanes can cause. Mohansec's PTA and Sports Barn worked collaboratively with us to bring the artistic portion of this project to life. We are grateful for their generosity and hope to be able to make a donation to hurricane relief efforts on behalf of our 3rd graders as a result of the sale of our T-shirts. None of this great work would be possible without the support of our administration, school board, and my colleagues. We're very fortunate to have such a great team. Enjoy the presentation.
Have you heard the words "climate change" or "global warming"? Have you ever wondered what they mean? We did. During our library classes, we listened to selected passages from the book What Is Climate Change? We learned it's possible our choices can affect the Earth. Did you know that as the Earth's climate temperature gets warmer, hurricanes can be more likely to form? Two more books called Hurricanes Be Aware and Prepare and Hurricane taught us about hurricane safety and how it would feel if our families were affected.
We thought it was a good idea to share what we learned with our families. We wrote letters to make them aware of things we can all do to help the Earth's temperature more stable. Some suggestions might to be drive less when we can, air dry clothes, or take reusable bags to the store. Did you know studying hurricanes' maps more closely can help you think about how long distances of hurricanes can travel?
Speaking of hurricane maps, we noticed that Hurricane Harvey seemed to spread out over many square miles. That made us think about measuring the total distance of a hurricane when it stops and starts over a place like Houston, Texas. Unfortunately, when it starts, that is when the most damage happens and many people are affected. Some of us were even able to learn more about an exciting job called hurricane hunting when we read our scholastic news in the classroom.
In math, we learned about rays. Arays are a good way to measure how many square miles a hurricane covers when it stalls. We measured the square mileage of Hurricane Dorian when it stalled over the Bahamas. Graph paper and towels helped us organize our measurements. All of this got us thinking about what we can do to help people that are affected by hurricanes.
As a student at Mohansec, we are lucky to have great teachers and resources to help us use our imaginations and brainstorm ideas that can help others. We wanted to design something that would alert people when a hurricane is approaching. The resources we used were Littlebits and an app called Green Screen by Do Ink. Both of these tools helped us use to us our creativity and problem-solving skills to help people when they might need it the most.
First, we worked in teams to build our weather alert tool. We had to decide which pieces were needed by reading directions. Next, we attached all the pieces to make a circuit. The circuit must be closed to work. Working in a group is not always easy. It takes a lot of respect, kindness, and listening.
Our weather tool can be helpful for people to know when a hurricane might be coming. It has a loud buzzer that buzzes when wind reaches high speed. This warning tells people it might be time to leave their homes to stay safe. Please watch the video to see how it works.
Our reading and research taught us about being aware and prepared. forecaster on TV. We created public service announcements, or PSAs, by using the Green Screen by Do Ink app. These PSAs encourage people to evacuate their areas if the storm gets too dangerous. In our forecast video, you might notice that we created models of what a hurricane might look like using a small jar.
Our PSA show how it was like to be reporting during a powerful storm like Hurricane Harvey. They also show how dangerous it would be to stay in a stormy area. We hope our PSAs encourage people to evacuate quickly when a storm might be approaching. Seeing all the damage these storms caused really made us feel sad for the people who are affected. Those feelings of sadness motivated us to want to do something to help others. We believe our weather tools will keep people safe.
How can we keep safe when storms like this hit our neighborhood? We developed a tool to stay safe when severe storms approach. It is a weather alert device that buzzes and or lights up when winds gust to unsafe speeds. This tells us that a storm may be approached. These alerts can be placed at your school or your office. When you hear or see this alert, you should check your local weather stations to further instructions.
We were inspired by the picture and logo of our Focus UN Goal #13. It has an eye on the Earth. The logo encourages us to be watchful of choices we make that may affect the Earth. We drew our own pictures and logos to remind people to take care of our Earth. A few were chosen that best represent how we feel about Earth that have been put on T-shirts. How cool is that? For any T-shirts that may be sold, we will use the money to help people that still need things due to hurricane damage. Before our presentation ends, we thought you might enjoy working with the Littlebits. There is a box near your seat with the Littlebits we used. If you would like, please take a moment to explore the Littlebits just like we did. We hope you enjoyed our presentation, and you will always be thinking about ways to help the Earth.
We encourage you to start the process. Absolutely. 3rd graders, please, let's walk over and give some help.
How are you?
Yes!
Hi! You want to help us out? Come on! Sweet! So, you want to come here?
Yeah.
We should be starting. Tell us what we need to do.
So what is this? The windsock?
Right here, yeah, we're sharing.
First, we have to put all these things on.
Oh.
Let's get that.
Then this is what we connect it to.
To the power source?
Put it in.
Okay.
Roddy, does it go this way?
And this.
So then we'll need...
Do you want me to help you?
Okay.
This thing? Wait, where is the other thing?
I think it goes the other way. There we go.
Hold on one second. You want to let it go?
I don't want to squeeze your fingers.
You can make the other version.
No.
It's just like this, like makes your truck.
Make like the other version.
There we go. It's that way now.
Maybe you should go in the opposite direction.
This way? Yeah. You want to try?
We need something that has the round piece?
Perfect.
Perfect.
We need those things.
Right.
But we don't have...
What do we connect?
Roddy, do you remember what we connect?
Yeah.
Right here, do you have this thing?
We don't have doubles.
I think is this, is this this?
We don't have doubles. We need two. We don't have that for this one.
Oh, no, no. That battery's there just as an extra in case your first battery doesn't work.
So we're just like working together?
Yeah. Yeah. We'll just work together, yeah.
Can we put that there?
Yes.
Okay. Then people watch.
So I think, as I remember...
Just check all your pieces. Make sure you have everything, right?
So then, we have everything?
What's our light though? What's our light?
So no, that's like how loud it does.
We need the power cable. Now we need, now that's connected.
So it goes on that one now?
And this, we need, wait, dude, dude. I need, I need everything. If I'm going to do this. So then I need to connect, take this, connect that to this, then I connect that to this.
Hi!
Oh, that's how they do it. So now we'll do that. Now we take this, we go like this.
Which goes next?
So now we have to flip that over. Okay.
Don't we have to put this one?
In the end, right?
Oh, yeah. Wait a minute. Then we need to take this. Yes, thank you. We're having a little bit of a problem.
Go the other way?
We have to take this out for a second. We need to make it leveled so it perfectly stays like that.
Oh, I see.
Then we put that on there. It's repelling. Yeah, it was repelling because it don't... So now?
We just put this in like some certain way that I would...
We do, 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 dude. We're not there. We're not there yet.
We're here? We're done with this?
For now. We can also add, do you want to add some more accessories like this? Maybe we can fit this on?
No, these are for the light. It's the pressure.
Oh, yeah, let's add the light.
Do we? Because it's not going to have enough.
You know how to turn it on? There's an on switch right here.
It's working.
Yeah, I know how to. I'm keeping it on. Let's keep it on. Okay, so disconnect these, actually. Maybe we can add this. Let's add this. I think this will be nice.
Yeah, this will be nice. That will be a nice...
But we have to make sure like it goes up to here so it orders what fits, though.
Oh, I see.
We have to, we have, we can take, we can put on two more things. I think we're, we can, we can, we can take this.
You have to be small, though. This.
Yeah, it has to be small. You're right.
Or maybe this, this could be nice. I think this will be, this will be a fit. This will take a fit, I think. And then we have to make sure that it fits, though.
I think it's a bit too long, no?
Uh, yeah, it's a bit too long. Let's just take off the accessories. We don't need them.
I think it's a shorter piece.
Well, that's, that's for the light though.
Oh, I see.
Because you can have the light or...
Yes.
Or maybe...
Gotcha.
Yeah, but...
But we don't want to use the accessory. We take that time.
That's good.
And then we can put it on, and then...
Annoying.
It should work.
All right, that's very good.
It has to attract to the wind, though, so.
No, you can wave it.
Might take a few winds, or we could just...
Ah! Very nice! Yay! So when it flows, then it goes off. And then if you put the light on, then you could hear it. And you could see it.
See that works?
Very good!
Let's try.
All right.
Just flip it like this. Hold it and flip it.
Wow! Good job!
Great job, guys!
Anthony, did you hear that? We got it. Ours went too!
There you go. Good job, guys. Thank you!
Very good. Very nice. Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
No, you're not. This was so much fun. Thank you both.
We should probably take that out so other people can...
Take that off first.
Next year, I'm going to... I thought they were going to like hang around for a year.
All right. Can I ask you both a favor? Do you see that gentleman over there in the white T-shirt?
Yeah.
I think he would love to get some help. Yes? All right. Thank you.
Send them over to Anthony.
Will do. Thank you. They were great. Thank you.
Oh, Anthony's asking him like textual questions. That's why it's taking so long.
Anthony's asking him like textual questions. That's why it's taking so long.
She needs to bring this to pay us Q before she...
So cute!
I think we're going to be working for a break, a five-minute break.
Children's time. Clean up now. But everything is... You guys get it. That's right. That is true. New friends. Yes, yes. Thank you. Oh, now he wants a light with it. Not just the sound. He wants a light too. Well done. We'll bring the children here.
So... That?
I know! I know, they all ended up there. She really is. Yeah! Yeah, a little bit. Yes, yes. Three, two, one. All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
We could be here, that's absolutely terrific.
Thank you, thank you.
So, we could absolutely be here, I would argue, for at least a couple more hours doing this. This was so much fun. So... Can we get a second? So, with, boys and girls, before we take a quick intermission, I just want to share with you how proud of you I am. What you did in this project, and you may not have realized, what you did in this project, honestly, is what so many of us adults do in our work every day. You had to speak publicly, and you did a great job at that. You learned how to work together and work in groups, and that's something that is so important as you move your way not only through the Yorktown schools but become big people. You learned about circuitry and robotics. How cool is that? I could have done this for hours more. And you did public service announcements? I thought that was terrific, and I think Mr. Cole and I might need your help when it comes time for a snow decision, because this morning I was outside rubbing my foot on my driveway, and if I would have had one of your devices, it might have helped me out a little bit to determine if we needed to delay or close schools. So, boys and girls, I might be asking you to help me with the snow closing decisions when December and January roll around. But most importantly, you're learning how to make the world a better place. You're learning how important it is to empathize with others who are experiencing some real circumstances in their lives. So, boys and girls, I am so proud of you. Teachers, thank you so much for reinforcing this work and encouraging the work with our students. It is just so wonderful to see a vision and something that we dreamed up on paper come to fruition in the classrooms and see our students as beneficiaries of all of this. So I think I speak on behalf of my colleagues here on the board and my colleagues at district office. Thank you so much, teachers and students. Well done. We're really proud of you.
Dr. Hatter, the students were also our teachers, too. They came up here and they taught us, so not just they learned it, they were able to explain it to us, which was just very good. Awesome.
Yeah, that's a terrific observation. So at this point in the program, boys and girls, we're going to take a brief break because we have a really long meeting left ahead of us where we're going to talk about all kinds of important things for the schools, but you all have bedtimes, and we want to be respectful of your bedtimes. So, parents, thank you so much for sharing your children with us. We know it's not easy to come out on a weeknight and be part of our meeting. We'll take a very brief in-the-rain tuto. We'll take a... And then we have to make sure that it fits though.
I think it's a bit too long, no?
Uh, yeah, it's a bit too long, let's just take off the accessories.
Okay.
We don't, we don't need them.
I think it's a shorter piece.
Well, that's, that's for the lights though.
Oh, I see.
We're not using it.
Cause you can have the light or...
Yes. Gotcha.
Or maybe, yeah, but...
But we don't wanna use the accessory.
Well, yeah.
Take that time. And then we can put it on, and then...
Annoying.
Should work.
Alright, that's very good.
Has to attract to the wind though, so. No, no, you, no, you can leave it.
Might take a few winds, or we could just...
Ah! Very nice! Yay, so when it flows, then it goes off. And then if you put the light on, then you could hear it, or you could see it.
See that works?
Very good!
Yeah, let's see, let's try.
Alright.
Just flip it like this, hold it and flip it.
Wow!
Good job!
Holy roll!
Great job, guys! Anthony, did you hear that? We got it. Ours went too!
You got it.
There you go.
Good job, guys, thank you! Good job! Very good, very nice, excellent, thank you!
You're welcome.
No, you're not, this was so much fun, thank you both.
We should probably take that out so other people can...
Well, yeah, next year, next year, you're about to probably... I thought they were gonna like hang around for a year.
Can I ask you both a favor? Do you see that gentleman over there in the white t-shirt?
Yeah.
I think he would love to get some help. Yes? Alright, thank you.
Just send him over to Anthony.
Will do.
Thank you! They were great, thank you. Oh, Anthony's not asking me anything, why is it taking so long? Anthony's asking him like, text questions, that's why it's taking so long! So cute!
I think we're gonna be working for our break, our five-minute break.
We can clean up now, children's time, we can clean up now, but everything...
Yeah. She gets it and you guys get it. That's right. That is true, new friends. That, hmm, yes, yes. Thank you. Oh, now he wants a light with it, not just the sound, he wants a light too! Well done. We'll bring the children here.
So... That?
I know, I know, they all ended up there. She really is. Yeah! Yeah, a little bit. Yes, yes, three, two, one. Alright.
Okay.
Thank you.
We, we could be here, and that's absolutely terrific.
Thank you, thank you.
So... We could absolutely be here, I would argue, for at least a couple more hours doing this, this was so much fun. So... Can we get a second? So, uh, with, boys and girls, before, uh, we take a quick intermission, I just wanna share with you how proud of you I am. What you did in this project, and you may not have realized, what you did in this project honestly is what so many of us adults do in our work every day. You had to speak publicly, and you did a great job at that. You learned how to work together, and work in groups, and that's something that is so important as you move your way not only through the Yorktown schools, but become big people. Uh, you learned about circuitry and robotics, how cool is that? I could've done this for hours more. And you did public service announcements, I thought that was terrific, and I think Mr. Cole and I might need your help when we, when it comes time for a snow decision. Because this morning I was outside rubbing my foot on my driveway, and if I would've had one of your devices, it might've, uh, helped me out a little bit to, uh, determine if we needed to delay or close schools. So, uh, boys and girls, I might be asking you to help me with the snow clo, closing decisions when December and January roll around. Uh, but most importantly, you're learning how to make the world a better place. You're learning how important it is to empathize with others who are experiencing some real circumstances in their lives. So, boys and girls, I am so proud of you. Teachers, thank you so much for reinforcing this work and encouraging the work with our students. It is just so wonderful to see a vision and something that we dreamed up on paper come to fruition in the classrooms and see our students as the beneficiaries of all of this. So I think I speak on behalf of my colleagues here on the board and my colleagues at district office. Thank you so much, teachers and students, well done, we're really proud of you.
Dr. Hatter. The, the students were also our teachers too, they came up here and they taught us, so not just they learned it, they were able to explain it to us, which was just very good, awesome.
Yeah, that's a terrific observation. Uh, so at this point in the program, boys and girls, we're going to take a brief break, because we have a really long meeting left ahead of us where we're gonna talk about all kinds of important things for the schools, but you all have bedtimes. And we wanna be respectful of your bedtimes. So, parents, thank you so much for sharing your children with us, we know it's not easy to come out on a weeknight and be part of our meeting, we'll take a very brief in-the-reign reboot, we'll take a very brief intermission to allow you to, uh, take your children, excuse them for the evening, and, and enjoy, go on with the rest of your nights. Thank you so much for joining us. Okay, thank you all for bearing with us through the intermission, it is so wonderful to have another group of really, really important people with us here this evening. And at this point, I'm just going to make my way to the podium so that we may honor our business office. Thank you all. So I don't have a microphone, I don't think I need a microphone, do I, do I need one? Very good, so this is for sound when it gets to our television station, which I will announce in my superintendent's report, both stations are working, so hopefully our viewing audience will have the opportunity to view this presentation. Everything that we do in the Yorktown Central School District centers around our vision, our 2020 vision for 2020, and that vision can be captured in, in a single term, and that's East Team. Now, at the center of East Team is the notion of educating the whole child, and the importance of educating every aspect of the child. Now, I came across this quote, and I thought it was very fitting for our business office. Everyone sees the glory moments, but they don't see what happens behind the scenes. And fortunately for our school district, we've had a lot of glory moments, we've had a lot of wonderful accomplishments across our district, whether it's the Blue Ribbon, celebrating our academic success and, of our students, or whether it's the National and New York State School Districts of Character that celebrate the other part of education, I would argue the most important part of education. And we've also had so many other acknowledgements along the way. But what you don't see is the engine that drives this, and our business office is a very big part of driving this work. Quite often I'm asked, uh, do you work over the summer? And, and are you guys open over the summer? And I think the business office will attest that summertime is probably one of the busiest times in a school year, because on the other side of the thirty-four-hundred-and-three children in our school district and the five-hundred employees, is the ninety-eight-million-dollar organization that is managed each year. And that comes with a lot of work, and a lot of requirements. We oversee payroll, more than five-hundred employees. We have so many vendors and contracts that pass through the hands of the business office. School Lunch Program is a business unto itself, and that is also managed out of our business office. And when you work with taxpayer funds, there are a lot of regulatory entities that oversee our work, and some are listed here on the screen for, for everyone to see. In addition, there are grants, there are tax surcharges, not everyone's happy with the property taxes that they pay. Uh, field trip coordination, you wouldn't think that those things would come through a business office, but there are so many contracts that have to be secured, insurance documents that have to be obtained, hold harmless agreements that have to be executed. We borrow money as a school district, just like any other school district in the state and in the country, and, and with that comes debt service, and someone needs to oversee that. Security comes out of the business office, all of the capital projects and, and so many presentations that go into our work, so when you look at the whole child, a very big part of the whole child is held with our business office. Just looking at academics alone, if you were to just focus on that piece, all of those bullets there, and, and I'm just listing a few, I'm listing a few that I think, uh, are easy to relate to and easy to connect to. And they are such responsible stewards of taxpayer money that enable us to do some of the things that we're able to do. So last week, or two weeks ago, pardon me, we spoke about our facilities, our O and M department, giving us the resources from a facilities perspective, we couldn't, we couldn't necessarily build a new East Team lab, we, we reallocated repurposed space to make that happen. But from the business office, there, there are prudent steps that they take to ensure that we have the best pricing nationally, and to make sure that we're documenting all of our purchases, that increases our buying power, that provides us with opportunities that we would not have had otherwise. When you think about the other aspects of the whole child, there are so many other moving parts, a simple fundraiser goes through several layers of approval within our district, and that all originates in the business office. When you think about the one-hundred-and-thirty co-curricular clubs and athletic opportunities that we offer to children, all of that has to come through our business office. And they do a remarkable job of making sure the district is protected, that taxpayer monies are responsibly allocated, and that there is oversight every step of the way. We have a wonderful, wonderful business office team, and it's led by Mr. Cole, our Assistant Superintendent for Business. And at this time, what I'd like him to do is I'd like him to make his way to the podium, I'm going to ask Mr. Cole to speak briefly about each member of the business office, I will ask the board to make their way over to the side area if this is okay, we'll call each member of the business office up, one by one, and, uh, we would also offer them a certificate and our congratulations. Mr. Cole, I turn it over to you at this point.
Thank you, Dr. Hatter. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, as you proceed up to the, the, the procession line here, the people you are about to meet this evening comprise a team that has done one of the rarest things that you can find in a school district business office, and that has successfully had our credit rating increased twice since the financial crisis of two thousand eight. These team members largely are responsible for the practices and procedures that have been put into place, uh, that have put us in such good stead statewide. And it's my pleasure to be able to introduce each one of them to you and the community this evening, uh, and just very briefly, uh, discuss a little bit about each one of them. Uh, the first recipient is our accountant, uh, who has been with us since February, she come, came to us from another school district within our region, uh, her name is Denise Zapata. Denise is responsible for the supervision of payroll, she's also responsible for cash receipt collections, and that includes everything from the rents paid by tenants at French Hill, to all of the money that's collected from field trips and so forth, and Denise is with us this evening, and Denise Zapata. The next individual to be recognized is, uh, someone who handles all of our accounts payable. Uh, there are several funds that, from which we pay bills in our, in our school district, the general fund, the school lunch fund, the capital fund, this one individual handles all of that. In addition to that, she is responsible for liaising with the board's claims auditor on a bi-weekly basis as we cut these checks, so in essence, her work is audited every fifteen days. Uh, because of the superb level of attendant, uh, uh, attention she pays to detail, Ms. Joanne Stavola does a wonderful job, and she's here with us this evening, Mrs. Stavola, if you would, please. Our next recipient is the district's treasurer, Alicia Sigvartson. She came to us approximately three years ago, a former auditor of school districts, uh, and when she interviewed with us, she jumped off the page as highly qualified, she's a certified public accountant. She's responsible for the entirety of our general ledger, which means that she's responsible for the entire accounting operation. You've seen her before in some of the board meetings, uh, at the Financial Advisory Committee and the Board's Audit Committee, and she's also responsible for a direct relationship with our external auditors, and she's here with us this evening also, Ms. Alicia Sigvartson. The next individual we'd like to recognize seemingly touches every piece of paper and has a hand in every decision that we make. Uh, she's responsible for the coordination of the Free and Reduced School Lunch Program, she is part of contract analysis, she is, uh, the lead on, uh, our risk management operation, she handles all of the approvals for field trips and for the use of buildings along with, uh, some of the other individuals in our office, she's an indispensable part of our team. Mrs. Janet Fusco is here with us this evening. As we saw earlier, Dr. Hatter referenced the fact that security is handled out of the business office, and the person who is the, at the forefront of that is our, uh, next person that we're going to recognize, her name is Noreen Boyle. Noreen is the first person you would see in our school district if you entered our district office, she is responsible for vetting every single visitor, uh, sw, uh, swiping their licenses through the databases to check for security clearances, and, and she's also responsible for the management of the security access system. Uh, she is the, a wonderful face for the school district, and one of the more pleasant people you're going to meet, and she's a true joy and benefit to our business office, and Noreen Boyle is with us tonight. Next, we want to recognize Mr. Eric Bishop. Eric is responsible for the processing of payroll, bi-monthly, by himself, with, with oversight from, uh, Denise as we indicated earlier, but Eric coordinates everything. Eric came to us, uh, several years ago, is a product of Fordham University, another financial professional within the organization, and, uh, if you want to meet an individual, pays attention to detail and hits every single deadline, that's Eric Bishop, and he's here with us this evening, Eric. Thank you all very much for allowing us to recognize him.
I, I, a couple people I just want to acknowledge, first of all, my assistant is in the audience, Joanne, and I just want to acknowledge her, she also has functions that she, uh, participates in in the business office, and she is my left and right hand, so I'd be lost without Joanne, so I do want to acknowledge Joanne as well. And, uh, the, the person who we didn't acknowledge, whose name is first on that list, is Tom Cole. Because behind every great department, there is a, just a terrific leader, and Tom is as, as wonderful as it gets, and, and I'm just honored and delighted to be working with him, not just from the business aspect perspective, but Tom and I were on text at four-fifteen this morning, just talking weather today. So in addition to his regular responsibilities, which are enormous, uh, the, the management of, of a, a budget that approaches a hundred million dollars is no easy feat, and, uh, in addition to that, we're talking weather. So that's something that, um, although Tom's name has become synonymous with the morning snow calls, which is so affectionately referred to by our students, uh, Tom has a really big job in our district, and he leads that department with such detail, and, uh, his moral compass is always pointing in the right direction, so, Tom, it's an honor to have you working alongside us.
Thank you, Dr. Hatter, and I, I do appreciate it, and I, I must, um, I do want to, uh, allow you to, uh, to understand fully in the community that, uh, before I came here, I had another professional life in the private sector, I spent a great many years in the private sector, about fifteen years before I came here. And, um, I've been responsible for other financial organizations, and, um, the skillset of the individuals you have met here tonight will rival any that I have, uh, worked with in the private sector of entities of similar size, and I think we're truly blessed, uh, to have the individuals that we have, uh, uh, recognized here that, tonight, and, uh, any success that this business office has, uh, and the school district has had financially is largely due to the, to the responsibilities that each one of these fulfills every day.
Terrific, I also just want to acknowledge some of our directors, some of my central office colleagues who are here to support the business office, and, um, Mr. Barrett, our athletic director in the back, Mr. Rosen, Director of PPS is here, and Ms. Forsberg, Director of Technology, is here, so I just want to recognize them and their support of the business office. The, the business office literally touches every department in our organization, so with that said, I'll turn.
Okay, well, again, congratulations to the business office, Tom, and everybody here, we know you do a yeoman's job, and we are grateful for everything you do every day, so thank you. Anybody else wanna say anything?
So at this point, we're gonna take another brief recess to allow you to get on with your evenings, you're welcome to stay, it's, we have a lot of policy to talk about, and, and so many other things to approve and accept, and some things that you actually asked for placement on the agenda. But, uh, if you take this opportunity to make your way to the exit, we'll certainly understand that as well, thank you all, thank you all for being here, congratulations. Okay, so I'm going to just continue with a few other items on the superintendent's report. On November fifteenth, which was this past Friday, Mr. DeGeneres, Ms. O'Shea, and I traveled to Washington DC to accept our National Blue Ribbon Award, we were so excited to participate in the ceremony, it was a lovely ceremony, and it was wonderful to bring this amazing plaque and, and flag back to Yorktown, and, uh, we look forward to having a wonderful ceremony where we'll raise the Blue Ribbon flag on our flagpole outside of the high school, more information, uh, to come on that. This past weekend, Yorktown High School's students put on the production of Almost Maine, and I had the opportunity to attend the dress rehearsal, or part of the dress rehearsal, and it was absolutely wonderful, our students are so talented, I really am looking forward to their performance this spring, and certainly more information to follow on that. As I noted previously, uh, thank you to Ms. Forsberg and to Ms. Burns, our Cablevision and FiOS channels are up and running, and we're populating the stations with new programming, certainly Board of Education meetings, we're looking to add some athletic events, and certainly performances by our students will be posted to the channel in due time, so it's a wonderful, wonderful, uh, opportunity to, for our communities to stay connected with our school district, and I encourage you to take advantage of that opportunity, we're located on Channel eighteen on Cablevision and twenty-seven on Verizon FiOS. On November eighth, we hosted the East Team Roadshow, which was a program sponsored by Putnam Northern Westchester Bowses, where we saw twenty-eight, uh, professionals from other school districts as far south as Bronxville and as far away as Suffolk, come to visit to learn more about our East Team approach, and to, uh, ask questions, and to visit classrooms, and to hear presentations on our journey in implementing East Team, and it was a wonderful day, my thanks to Dr. Roberts, Mrs. Horowitz, and their respective staffs for welcoming our visitors and putting together just a lovely program for the day. On November fourteenth, the middle school held their annual international night, it was just such a wonderful celebration of the many cultures in our community, as well as wonderful music and delicious food from all over the world, I, I had a great time that night, it was a wonderful, wonderful event. This past week, there was also the announcement of the resignation of our football coach, Coach Mike Rysigno, who's also a phys ed teacher here in the district, just a wonderful, wonderful fifteen years, and I want to take the opportunity to public, publicly acknowledge the fine work that he's done for our district and, and the contributions that he's had, not only to the football team, but to our broader school community. I, I consider it a pleasure to have worked with him, and I wish him well, and his next step is he now takes a more active role in the athletic careers of his own children, so we wish him well, and, and we thank him for his service to the school district. The Board of Education meeting this evening... He's staying as a phys ed teacher, I'm sorry if the, I'm sorry, yes, he's staying with us as a phys ed teacher, uh, and, and we're delighted to have him here as a phys ed teacher, he's simply, uh, stepping down as the head football coach of our varsity football program, but he is staying on as, certainly as a phys ed teacher, and we're so happy to have him here. Uh, at this Board of Education meeting, you just saw that we honored members of our business office, as we head into budget season, I thought it was important for, uh, us to have...
I thought it was important for us to have faces that go with the names and the people who are behind the scenes doing all the heavy lifting and putting together our wonderful budget. And throughout the course of this school year, I look forward to honoring so many more of our unsung heroes in the school district who worked tirelessly behind the scenes to ensure that taxpayer monies are spent responsibly, students are well cared for, our facilities are well maintained, and all the wonderful things that are happening in our school district continue to happen. So at this point, my report concludes. I'll turn it back over to you, Jackie.
Thank you. We're going to go into board reports. We'll start with the Audit Committee.
We don't have any updates at this point. We will regroup again after the new year, and we will regroup then.
Fiscal?
Yeah, Fiscal Advisory Committee met on November 6th, I believe, and we had the opportunity to meet with our claims auditor. We were seeking some feedback on the process and our procedures, and we had a very good discussion with that. We also looked at some budgetary items and looked at some capital project stuff. Very good meeting overall, and we will be back at it come the budget time.
Okay. Policy.
Sure. We last met last week on November 13th. We were able to review and adopt five policies for the month of November. We were able to review and delete four policies, keeping on with our goal of about 10 policies per month. So we're trying to stay on track. But some of the ones are a little beefy, so if we fall behind, that's why. We do meet, you know, two and a half hours a month, so we certainly spend our time. If you see a little less, it's just because they're lengthier policies and require a more thorough review. And we'll next meet on December 18th.
Terrific. And then steering met two weeks ago, a week ago. We were reviewing projects that are currently at SED, just to make sure we're all in line for going out to bid on them. We have some already up. We're waiting for them to come back so we can go out to bid. We have other ones in different processes, and then we have to start talking about next steps after this work gets done. So we're just kind of moving along. All right. Can we go to board action items? Can I have a motion to approve the minutes for the October 7th and the October 21st meetings?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. A motion to approve the Treasurer's Report for October 2019?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. A motion to approve the Claims Audit Report for October 2019?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. A motion to approve the Extra Classroom Report for October 2019?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Policies. A motion to approve the first reading and adoption of the following policy and regulation, 6830 expense reimbursement and 6830 R. expense reimbursement regulation?
So moved.
All those in favor? It's an adoption on this one. Be it resolved that the following policies shall be deleted from the policy manual because they are either obsolete, unnecessary, or included within other policies. 4323 Identification of Possibly Gifted Children, and it's two exhibits, one and two, and 5500 Regulation, Student Records Regulation.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. And then we have first reads on the following policies, 4322 Enrichment, 5500 Student Records, 5605 Voter Registration and Pre-Registration, and 8130 Point One Extreme Risk Protection Orders, which is the red flag law. So anybody have any questions, comments, concerns? No? Okay. Two of them, go ahead.
I was going to save this for the end, but I think it'll be more timely here. Thank you. I really appreciate the direction that the policies have been going in in terms of eliminating a lot of verbiage that's not necessary and streamlining them all.
That's Lisa.[1217.83][1217.83](laughter)
No, it's incredibly helpful, and I think it really does. It makes it so much easier to understand when it's not embedded in a whole bunch of nonsense, so thank you.
We spend a lot of time.
I can tell.
Talking about it and reviewing it.
I really do. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. We're going to go to Personnel. We don't, the first read is not a vote, we're good. Okay. Okay. Upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to the following be approved. Under Certified Personnel, we have appointments, tenure appointments, coaches and co-curricular appointments, in addition to the substitute list, correction in an appointment, and a teaching assistant change in assignment. Under Classified Personnel, we have appointments for civil service in additions to the substitute list.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Under the Business Office. I motion to approve the contract with Silent G Productions for the provision of theatrical sets and related services for the production of Grease in the Yorktown High School Auditorium for the amount of $8,000, and for the provision of theatrical lighting services in the amount of $4,000. The term of service is from February 17th through March 16th, 2020, with the schedule of work and rehearsals to be determined with the director.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. A motion to approve the budget transfers listed below?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. A resolved upon recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education authorizes the Board President to sign the Hold Harmless Agreement with Putnam Northern Westchester Bowses for the use of their dump truck. So moved. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Pips. Motion to approve the following Yorktown Association of Administrators and Supervisors Professional Improvement Program listed below, and the Yorktown Congress of Teachers Professional Improvement Proposal listed below.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. A motion to arrange the following placements as of November 18th, 2019?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Gifts, Grants, and Donations. A motion to approve the following Gifts, Grants, and Donations with gratitude for Yorktown High School, $16, and the New York Life Employee Payroll Match Program, and at Mohansick, $1,300, and the Mohansick PTA for a Holidays Around the World Assembly.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. We're up to public comment. Anybody wishing to speak? No, we're up to board comment. Anthony?
My favorite time.
I know.
And my favorite time, good news. And the good news is Mohansick did a fantastic job. Tonight was one of the most amazing nights because when I sat here and I had a group of kids gather, they actually managed themselves empathetically and patiently to build a circuit that, pushing me out of the way and stepping back and watching them do something that had a little trouble doing it. No, but it was amazing how they were patient with each other, and it's just a sign of all of our administrators and teachers in this school and every school that, you know, shows an amazing district that we have. And thanks to you guys, and like I said, the board and all the teachers, but tonight was special to see them gather together and talk and figure it out. So, you know, we come here and we do everything we do, and you see this, and it makes me come back, I guess. So thank you. It was pretty cool tonight.
Thank you. Mike?
Yeah, no, great, great night. Mohansick did an excellent job. I think it's always exciting when you see how engaged the kids get with learning and are able to actually teach us what needed to be done there. So, you know, it's fantastic. I really appreciated it, and it was a lot of fun. And of course, you know, thank you, big thank you to the business office, who we rely on daily for the great work that they do. So appreciate the recognition of them. Much obliged.
Yes, I wanted to thank Ron for, you know, recognizing the business office, and Tom, I think you're, you know, truly exceptional. I've had the honor and the privilege of working with many of these folks, and some of them going back even before my time on the board, and we really are lucky to have them. So, you know, thank you both for, you know, everything.
I'd like to echo what everyone said, especially Rashmi. Our business office is just phenomenal. I know probably a lot of the parents really don't know the people behind the scenes, but we work with them quite often, and they are just a pleasure to work with and just the brightest individuals, so we really are very, very lucky. So thank you. Also, just a few words about Mohansick. In addition to everything that everyone has said about the children tonight, they were just so courteous, and they think so globally. But I heard so many thank yous and pleases in here in their interactions that, you know, in addition to everything that we've said, it's just they were a pleasure to work with. They're really a nice group of kids.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just echo everybody else, and Dr. Hatter, to you. I mean, everybody's learning from the top down. For you to remember literally every single group that makes up our organization and to call them out and thank them, that just shows everybody here what this is all about and why we are what we are and why you guys were invited down to Washington to get that award. That's exactly what it's all about. And Tom, you and your team put us in this position that we can have everything that we have, and thank you so much. So that's, thank you.
Yes, I echo everything everybody said. I got to tell you, though, I'm always amazed when the kids come up and all the paraphernalia that you've brought into the school to teach them to learn. It's amazing, because who would have thought 10 years ago that stuff wasn't around? It's awesome. So that was wonderful. The business office is amazing. I have the opportunity to sit in meetings with some of them and to work with them, and they are truly, truly. Tom, it's under your leadership, though, so you need to take kudos for that. I know you don't like to, but it really is your leadership that does that, so I appreciate that. I went to the Friday night show of Almost Maine, so I know you went to the dress rehearsal. Our kids are amazing. They are so, so talented. They're incredible. I can't wait to see what Grease does, but this, every year it gets better and better, so they're just wonderful. So I just really appreciated that. So, Ron, Lisa, Tom, anything?
So just a couple of things. I do want to just share how honored I was to represent Yorktown High School, Yorktown School District at the National Blue Ribbon Ceremony. To see the accomplishments of so many people, staff, administrators, our students, our families, our connections, to be recognized at that level was so touching and wonderful and so well deserved for our high school and everyone who's had a hand in it. So I thought that was marvelous. Today, to see the Mohansick, our young learners, be so composed and so confident in talking about concepts that are so relevant to all of us, and talking about the Sustainable Development Goals and climate change, and being aware of issues that impact our world, to see how the teachers created those interdisciplinary units of study that all of our third graders are having an opportunity to be a part of is so wonderful, and it speaks to the dedication of our teachers to be willing to take a concept that can be vague at times, such as East Team, and really look at where are our initiatives, how do we connect them, and how do we connect them to good literature? That started with Christine Roper in the library and built from there with Mary Froats helping with the, you know, how do we measure distance with arrays and all of those pieces? So kudos to our teachers who take all of these things that we say, isn't this wonderful? Let's get this going, and they do it. So kudos to that. And my thanks to Tom. I cannot do my job without him. For all that he does that you don't see, he sits with all of the directors to make sure that we can develop a fiscally responsible budget for each of our departments. He keeps us comfortable that if at any point in time there is a need that we have for student, for a program, we can easily approach him and we can brainstorm how we can get things done. So I appreciate you every day, and thank you for the work that you and your department do.
The feeling's mutual, by the way, and I too just wanted to thank Dr. Hatter, Mrs. O'Shea, and Mr. DiGennaro for being such wonderful representatives of the school district in this really rare and important award that was received for the Blue Ribbon for the high school. Better ambassadors we could not ask for. And I too was very appreciative of the third graders helping Mrs. O'Shea and I out because we couldn't figure out how to open the box.
Okay. Then can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Good night, everyone. Thank you.